Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, August 19, 2015, 4:30 in the afternoon, so we shall begin our council meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Ron Renzing.
Here.
Randy Punkert.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? I'm gonna look at each one of you in the eye, and there are no public comments, let's move forward to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Any appointments?
Yes, the appointment is to the library board, and it is Kristin Nissen. The SCAD applicants are Kevin Miller and Brianna Bogalar. We'll spell those for you later, Frank and Tom.
Make the motion to approve. Support.
Thank you. If there's no questions, roll call, please.
Punkert.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Renzing.
Aye.
Gils.
Aye.
Okay, and going into new business, we will have an update and presentation from the marketing committee and Mrs. Heidi Brown.
I think you likely all already have these numbers, but I'm gonna pass those out to you anyway, just in case. What I'm having passed out, just in case you haven't seen those, is that's the revenue the year-to-date, kind of comparison over the last couple, three years, for you to take a look at, remembering that we always get that check a quarter in arrears, so. But I'm here on behalf of the marketing committee today. We have an active committee overseeing a variety of ongoing community betterment projects, distributing the hotel motel tax grant applications, and supporting projects and events that are good for the community of Sheldon and our residents, and also that encourage visitors to stop shop, stay and play. I'm happy to answer questions that you have about marketing committee-specific projects, but as we now have both city representation, as well as SCDC board member representation on the board, I believe you're given fairly regular reports as to our activity. But again, I'm happy to take questions about that at the end. The members of our Sheldon Marketing Committee are excited about Sheldon's continued growth and development. As a committee we recognize with growth and expansion comes increases in the cost of maintaining and operating our parks, sports complexes, and related facilities. The Sheldon Marketing Committee is being asked to contribute more to growth-related projects, as well as maintain an emphasis on our existing community projects. That is all positive and good. That said, we understand that growth is not free. I'm here today on behalf of the Sheldon Marketing Committee to ask the council to consider increasing the hotel motel tax rate from the current 5% level to the 7% maximum allowed by the Iowa code. As we look to the future, even the immediate future, and discuss how to best find additional revenue to support our growth and expansion, parks, items in the master plan, et cetera, capturing that additional 2% in the hotel motel tax is a way to generate additional revenue for those projects without there being any additional tax or burden locally on local residents. So I'm simply here today just to ask you whether, I don't know if you do that today or just in your, in your future meetings, but just that you take that into consideration because it is our understanding that would have to be something that would be considered on a ballot, and I know there are timing deadlines for that, but we're just, as we look forward and look at our next years and try to make budgeting plans, these are just things we're thinking of, so we would just ask to throw that out for your consideration as well.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me regarding specific other marketing things, or am I correct that you're getting regular updates, either from SCDC board or city?
I don't know if they've probably haven't seen, I think budget-wise, they probably see the numbers and whatnot as far as what we budget on annual basis, I don't know project-wise.
We see them through the SCDC periodically.
I see them through the SCDC.
Okay.
Brad and I are the SCDC liaisons.
Brad and I are.
Brad and Greg do, yeah.
We give them to SCDC, but they don't, they don't make it into, usually into this one, I don't think.
Oh, okay. So typically, I mean, just, you know, our annual projects, we increased to our largest, Sheldon's three largest tourism events, for Celebration Days with a $20,000 pledge. This year, that's an increase, Rise Fest, a $10,000 pledge, and the Village July 3th Celebration, an $8,000 pledge. Those were all increases because we recognize as those celebrations are growing, and the number of attendees are growing, therefore also are the expenses, and a couple of those events are a little easier for us, you know, to kind of measure, because they're ticketed events for things and try to go kind of a dollar a person, or, you know, try to, try to give towards those. We've also done things with the Lifelong Learning Center. Grant applications have been granted there for tarps, or different things that are used internally. Sports complex scoreboards, the, one of the design plans for the master plan, so, and then everything from our ongoing projects that have to do with maintenance and upkeep and replacement of flags and poles downtown, and throughout, and flowers and signs, and we've got another couple of entrances that aren't marked, so those are kind of our high points.
Awesome.
Any other questions for me? All right.
Thank you, Heidi. From here, we just, we are gonna look for direction from the council, because if we do decide to do this, it has to be by resolution, correct?
That is correct, yeah. Just to follow up, we've had conversations about this before in past budgeting years. We currently have budgeted for this coming year $100,000 anticipated revenue in hotel motel tax. As you see, actually, in 2014, we received a little over $111,000. We generally try to budget a little bit on the conservative side, not knowing exactly from year to year what sort of revenue would be generated. Currently, we are at the 5% rate, allowed by code is up to 7%. We've had discussions in the past about, you know, future maintenance and upkeep of various ongoing projects, future and upcoming projects, the possibility of increasing that by 2% to the 7%, based allowable by code, and Mike and I can certainly take you through that as far as the items of what you could use that additional 2% for. Items like we talked about with Sheldon Crossing, ongoing maintenance, mulling and upkeep of those various areas. There's a lot of plans that are being discussed, as we've talked about before, whether it's, you know, the event center, recreation trails, the borrow pit development, other shelters out in those areas. I think we all know that it's gonna certainly cost us more dollars just to maintain and do the upkeep of those areas, and as we know, we generally don't have as big an issue coming up with the dollars to build and construct, but one of our biggest concerns, and my concern always is, is taking care of those areas, and if we want that to be one of our top destinations and a location for our community, we certainly want to make sure that we're able to take care of that, so. Dollars-wise, additional 2%, about each percentage, based on today's dollars, would generate an additional $20,000 per percentage, or for 2%, estimated about another $40,000. So, you know, certainly that would go to good use or a long ways towards that, so. Looking for thoughts and direction from council on their thoughts, issues, concerns about that. As Heidi mentioned, timeline-wise, we would need to submit to the county auditor before September 17th. If we are interested, we would have to have specific language and pass by resolution to submit that, to be that on the ballot for November 3rd election date, so. Thoughts?
Would these revenues, could they be used for the upkeep, maintenance, or whatever, ongoing expenses of the event center, if that were to go through?
Yes, that would certainly qualify, and I'll quickly read this paragraph here that basically highlights all of it. Each city which levies the tax shall spend at least 50% of the revenues derived there from for the acquisition of sites for, or constructing, improving, enlarging, equipping, repairing, operating, or maintaining of recreation, convention, cultural, or entertainment facilities, including but not limited to memorial buildings, halls and monuments, civic center convention buildings, auditoriums, coliseums, and parking areas, or facilities located at those recreation, convention, cultural, or entertainment facilities, or the payment of principal and interest when due on bonds, or other evidence of indebtedness issued by the city for those recreation, convention, cultural, or entertainment facilities, or for the promotion and encouragement of tourist and convention business in the city and surrounding areas. So basically, anything related to, unless Mike has a different thought on that, related to, you know, on the sports complex area, I think would certainly even qualify, you know, that's a 50-50 split, you know, that we're paying for with the school. Not exactly sure what, you know, those numbers are gonna come in at, or out in the Sheldon Crossing area for upkeep, if we develop that as a park area, or the event center, or any of those type items would, would qualify. I know there are a number of other communities that do use the hotel motel tax for their event center, as an example, so.
And then is that money we have to request each year from marketing, or is it money that percentage we can just designate for the city's use?
That's at council discretion. The dollars as of right now, basically, come to the city. Has been approved in the past, the full 5% goes to the SCDC. The SCDC basically has established the marketing committee, and then the marketing committee basically, right now, facilitates those funds. Basically, the SCDC approves their budget on an annual basis. Basically, the city is the pastor, the money actually comes to us, so if the city so chooses to use that 2% or whatever that percentage is, we then could keep that in-house and then distribute the balance to the SCDC, just like we normally do.
Okay.
Hey, if we're gonna expand and build that new park out there, I think we need to hire another person or people to maintain that park area, because it's gonna be more than what our people can handle today. So I would support it if we used it for that green space out there and upkeep on that. You know, and it's kind of a tax that, when you go make a hotel reservation, you don't ask what the hotel motel tax is, you just ask the rate of the room, and you rent the room, and then you find out what the tax is later.
Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I think with stuff coming up that the city has, I think the 2%, I think we need to, the city needs to keep at least three, if not half, for what we have coming up.
You can decide that at budget time.
Right. Yep.
Really, this is a budget line item, isn't it, Scott?
Correct, yeah.
You have to know, and you can keep all of it if you want to. There's no mandate that says you have to, the only mandate is how you spend it.
Right. Two things, and maybe just to point out before we start getting too in-depth, and Mike and I've talked about this, you know, the language as far as what you would propose, as far as a resolution on the ballot, it would be our recommendation, you know, we don't even need to exactly decide that today, you know, that we keep that broad based on what the code language basically allows, to keep that somewhat broad at this perspective until we get into the budget, therefore it gives us a little more flexibility when we go through our budget cycle, that we have a better idea of where exactly we want to utilize those dollars. We'd hate to specify exactly that you can only use it, you know, on the green space, you can use it for mulling, that's it. You know, I think we try to, you know, certainly follow the code as far as the allowance of what you use it for, but keep it broad at this point, and then come budget time, too, we certainly can have those conversations. We proceed, and if it's, if it's positive as far as the outcome in November, and then come our budget time in January, February, we can determine as far as the dollars that we need to use in-house.
I guess I have a question for Heidi, based on this conversation and how you anticipate, your recommendation, is that how you anticipated it being used as well?
The additional 2%?
Yeah, well, starting with that.
Yes. I wasn't anticipating disbanding the marketing committee as suggested, but, but I, certainly the 2%, that was our, our thought, because certainly we're understanding that ongoing, you know, the marketing committee has supported the studies and, you know, things in the sports complex and in that expansion area, and I, you know, likely we would be called upon or looked to do that again, but for us to be able to maintain the ongoing projects we have and support some of the other things, it's, it would be for us to understand, here's, you know, we know what we're spending now, so, you know, what we were looking at is trying not to decrease what we're able to do now, but still be able to share that and understand the increasing need there. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Thank you.
Here's a thought, I guess, to move it forward, Mayor, if that's okay, is if the council's receptive to it, we don't have to come up with specific language today. If you're in concurrence of proposing the 2%, that Mike and I work together to come up with specific language, bring it back for the next council agenda, because we'd have to approve it by resolution, I think we'd have a difficult time coming up with that exact language today, and then we bring it back, and if the council's receptive to it, approve it by resolution at the next council meeting for consideration approval, and we could submit that to the county auditor to move forward from there.
And this is to bump it up to a 7%?
Yeah, I'd recommend to go to 2%. To me, it doesn't make sense if you're gonna do it, do 1%, I'd go for the full 2%.
Yep.
And cost-wise, based on what some of the rates are, I've been asked that, too, oh, the hotel rates are gonna go up so much, you're probably talking $2 to $3 is what that 2% would add to a hotel stay.
Okay.
Good idea, yep.
And everyone is agreeing, we'll bring it back by resolution on our next council meeting?
Okay.
Yep.
We don't need that by motion, so, okay. Thank you very much, thank you, Heidi. Next on our agenda is the consideration of the agreement that we've had with XL Development for our housing program, and Scott is gonna bring us up to date where we stand right now with where that contract with them is.
Yeah, basically, just to bring back, I guess, the options for consideration for the affordable housing program through the Iowa Finance Authority. If you recall, we worked with XL Development Group for applying for the lots in the Trilogy Edition. We have 10 lots remaining in that Trilogy Edition. They're proposing to build 14 units, affordable housing units. Basically, if we want to apply and resubmit that grant application, they're requesting, once again, we would have to extend that agreement, so I guess basically what I'm bringing you are basically three options for consideration. One is what you see in your packets as an extension of that agreement for those 10 lots, where once again, we would consider donating those lots as part of the project application to construct 14 units. Option two would be to consider a new location, if we're not happy with that location. They have slightly changed the criteria on the qualified application form, or other areas. There are certain points that would qualify within a two-mile radius. There's different criteria that certainly you'd have, in order to make you qualify in that, you're maybe talking a couple points difference, if you'd be within that two-mile area, which would also maybe even help us in this application. Or I guess the third option is, basically, to put it on hold. We've had conversations in the past of, you know, is this the right location? Is this the right program? I've had conversations with a few other communities that have submitted applications and have had, have been successful. Slight concern of the gap of the income levels that they have to meet to fill those. One, it's a federal program, so it's not a matter of that they're gonna get them filled, it's a slow process to get those units filled, so I guess the other, the third option would be is, you know, do we want to put it on hold right now? Do we want to look at other possible pieces of ground in a future application till we have a better determination of how we want to proceed and move forward on that, so. Anyway, I'm bringing those to the council. One way or another, we would have to take either action on this, this amendment for the Trilogy lots, because what we'd have to do is, basically, XL Development would have to have another appraisal done, and then they would actually like to start working relatively soon on the application.
When does our present agreement expire, October 1st?
October 1st, but they'd, they'd like to get the appraiser going, because that's actually backed up a little bit right now. December is our actually application deadline, so we basically have to do all the information, especially if we'd move to a different location. We got a lot of work we'd have to do in the next few months to get our application submitted, so.
I think we ought to put this on hold, and I think we ought to bring it back to the Development Committee and ask them to give us our recommendation on maybe a different location, is my thought.
Can I ask, where did we score low in the Trilogy area? Do you have those results?
Yeah, I don't have them right in front of me. What, the biggest, the biggest area is, is distance. You know, we, we question them and the concern, they have a criteria of all these certain items that fall within a mile radius, or otherwise, the library was outside the mile radius, the medical clinic was outside the mile radius, we qualified for grocery stores, the schools, we were fine. The other thing as far as security systems with our apartment complexes, it's affordable to put in one security system, and it's practical. They have in their application that to put security systems in your single-family homes and your duplexes, it's, it's just the cost-benefit analysis for this development group to do that, so they don't do it as part of their applications on this, so you lose a couple points by doing that. It's a smaller application, they actually would prefer to build more units in one location, so their financial guidelines and stuff of the criteria there, we score a little bit lower, so it's, it's very competitive. So in a matter of probably, I think there was like 14 points, Kurt probably remembers too, I think we were about 14 points too low to basically fall in the criteria of being awarded funding. And once again, it's, it's very competitive, we have no idea who's gonna apply again this year, whether we draw our hat in the ring, whether we'd even be successful again, it's, it's kind of unknown, so.
Ron, I'm curious what your rationale is for waiting?
Well, there's a couple. I've, I've learned more about it, and the criteria for actually filling the units is a lot more restrictive than I had understood it to be. Secondly...
In terms of wage guidelines, or?
Yeah, yeah. Frankly, I don't think we have that many employers in Sheldon that pay that way, that, that low. It would be tough. The second, and I don't think we want to build units to have them just sit there.
Correct.
And then the other reason is, I think the integrity of maybe being able to keep them all together rather than interspersing them, like the Trilogy, you know, at the time, Trilogy was really the only location that we had available that was ready, quote-unquote shovel-ready, and, you know, that's changed somewhat now, now that Sheldon Crossing is ready. I think that there's land just to the south of, for example, the Dranko property and Taco John's area and along there, that might be more conducive, and it would be all tied in together. It would be behind our multifamily designated area that we have laid out there, so we would tie in, I think, better. So I just think that, you know, you know, so we miss a year in our application. They told us no once, you know, I don't know how many times I like going and asking and getting told no either, so maybe, I just think it might be better to, to just let our option expire and give it more consideration the next year, and let the Development Committee do some work on it.
And then take those lots off of hold?
Come back with a specific recommendation.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments?
Question, when you met with that Paula to go over the application process and the scoring criteria, did you discuss any other areas, and how she thought they might score?
Yeah, we actually did. We looked at the Sheldon Crossing area. One of the items we talked about was apartment complex. We did fill with some of the scoring criteria changing a little bit, that potentially that could score a little bit higher. Once again, the security items, you know, they would put a security system in there, you put one in the front, one in the back. There's a qualification now of being within a two-mile radius, they would propose maybe building, building a 20-unit complex instead of where this one had 14 units total between the duplexes and the single-family homes, so that potentially could score a couple more points. So overall, she thought that area might be better. Those are the two areas that we really looked at, because one of the big criterias, you have to have infrastructure there, so we couldn't go and say, hey, this piece of ground here. The first thing they're gonna look at is, oh, you don't have water, sewer, street, or whatever it is there, we'd basically be marked off the list. I know Orange City's, first time they applied for theirs, they actually came up to review the site, and they couldn't find it because they didn't have roads to it yet. So the first year, Orange City didn't, wasn't successful because they didn't have the infrastructure there, so. The only two areas we really talked about were Trilogy and Sheldon Crossing. So scoring-wise, and maybe not a huge difference, but Sheldon Crossing potentially would score a little bit higher in the multifamily area. If we do something in the, the single-family area similar to this, scoring would probably be somewhat similar to, as the Trilogy.
In terms of employers, I mean, we hear that all, I mean, it's been one or two on our list of needs for years, affordable housing, affordable housing.
Housing.
Would these employees be open to idea of a 20-unit complex versus a duplex or a...
They wouldn't qualify because of their income levels, is part of the problem, Greg.
For the housing?
We did, I did do some checking on that, because that was one of the concerns, we heard about a, a project close by here, that they're having a tough time filling their units. One is the timeframe, because they have like 60 applicants, well, by the time you screen each applicant, you know, by the time, you know, everybody says, well, I qualify for this, I want to move in there, by the time they go through all the criteria, the income guidelines, and all the federal requirements they have, and oh, shoot, you don't qualify, they cross them off the list, then they go to the next application. So they have a pile of applications, but that income guideline is, is so tight on what qualifies, and with the number of kids you have, you know, they're talking three-to-four bedroom units, so basically, they all would have to be families, that it's, it's been tough to actually fill those units. You know, everybody talks about affordable, but we've, we've, we've talked about this for years, what, what is affordable? Is, you know, this is an affordable housing program, no question about it, but it's, it's a, it's a lower income range, and I think Ron made a good point, that some of our employers actually might pay higher above that, that affordable level as determined by the federal government. So we would hope that, you know, take some of our industries in town, that we'd put up 14 units, that we could fill them in a heartbeat and get those folks to live in town, but there's no guarantee on that.
Okay.
The Sheldon Crossing, you could put the duplexes there yet?
Can, yeah. Duplexes are allowed in the single-family units.
See, if you drive, if you drive around and you look at different lots and what's markable for the SCDC, and those north lots are gonna be tough to sell.
Oh, right.
And, I mean, that'd be a perfect place for it, I think. With the new park possibly coming in, I mean, is that a scoring option for this or not?
I don't think there's really anything with, with park and any of those amenities on there. I mean, schools, grocery stores, the basic services certainly seem to be kind of the main criteria, transportation, connection, transportation.
But if it's still affordable, are we gonna run into the same problem with apartments?
Good.
You know?
Good. It's, it's the same income guidelines, whether it's an apartment or a house.
Or a duplex, or...
Yeah, or duplex. Income guidelines are the same. They get, they get adjusted every year, but it's, it's based on the cost of living is basically all it moves up on an annual basis, so.
I think listening to Ron and Randy, I think we should send it maybe back to the marketing, or to the Development Committee and talk to them about those north lots in the Sheldon Crossing, and, and maybe have that as an option.
If we take no action, it'll, our option will just expire.
The contract goes away.
Correct, yeah. I think it's October 1 or whatever, so basically then we have those lots to put back.
And then a lot will come back, yep.
Then all those neighbors that complain, they can come and buy them.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Sold.
Any other discussion? Do we want to take action on this? Is this something that we just don't want to renew, or we just want to leave it as it is and let it expire?
I think we'll let Scott bring it to the Development Committee.
Basically, what I'm hearing is, I mean, certainly research and look at different locations, other pieces of ground, or possible lots. If we find something that certainly qualifies, or bring it back.
Yep. Sounds good.
We need to do something, we can't just let it die on the vine.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, housing, and Kurt and I talk about it about on a daily basis, I mean, housing, employees to our community are certainly high on the radar list.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're certainly knocking on every door and looking at every possible avenue we can, so.
Is this something we could bring back next month to see if the, our next meeting, to see if the, if the Development Committee...
When does Development meet again?
They don't have set meetings, yeah.
Okay, they can just call one then?
They call a meeting between now and then, and if it's an option for them.
See what's where it is.
See what's what they think about it, and then...
Go from there.
Go from there, next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds good, thank you.
Because I think it still gives us time. Because I think it still gives us time.
Sure. All right. Let's move ahead. Todd, are you ready? We are now going to consider the engineering proposal for the sludge piping modification. Sounds interesting. Oh, yeah.
Anyways, what you have in front of you is a, uh, engineering services agreement from DGR, uh, at the amount of $15,100 that we're looking for approval. Uh, last budget session, uh, you guys approved $86,000 towards, um, our sludge pump modifications. Quick highlight on that project. We currently have, uh, four diaphragm pumps in the basement of the wastewater plant that we either pump, pump primary, secondary sludge, or we pump out of the digester and across the valve press to dewater. Those pumps are multi-use pumps. The problem we have is, is having those four pumps do three different jobs, it doesn't allow us to do more than one job at a time. Because not only do they share pumps, but they also share piping. The other problem we have is we add, when we give water, we add polymer to the sludge from the digester to help it coagulate so when it goes across the valve press, we can squeeze liquids out and retain solids. Diaphragm pumps don't pump at consistent rate, they pump in surges, which makes it very hard to get good mixture on the polymer. So what we're proposing is, is positive displacement pumps with its own piping so we can do a better job, more efficient job of dewatering. And the diaphragm pumps are from the 1970s, so maintenance and choose a higher one. So that's around the amount of project. It's a little more detailed than that, but, uh, DGR is looking, is, um, put the proposal together to help us get it out to bid and for inspection services and contract administration.
Question. What's going to be the cost? I understand the $15,000 somehow.
The, the, the current, the current cost estimate is $84,100.
So we're wish, that would, that's close to what we estimated.
In our budget, yeah.
Doesn't include the $15,000, yeah.
Yeah, there's 18, we've built in 18% and you start getting to these type project, 18% in contingencies on this project too, so.
And how will this fit into when and if two years from now the big brother comes down on us?
Yeah, we asked that. We talked about that in depth with, uh, Mike Carr from DGR and none of us can see our dewatering operations going away no matter what our permits say.
Okay.
We're still going to have to deal with the sludge. It's likely we're still going to have a digester. If anything, we'll be looking at expanding that digester because we currently struggle sometimes with, uh, withholding enough for a long, uh, period of time. We don't see the operation going away, otherwise we wouldn't propose the project.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve the engineering proposal for $15,100. Support.
Thank you. If there's no comments or questions, roll call please. Sawyer?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Thank you. And now the update on the hydraulic water study.
Sure. If you guys remember, we, uh, we approved funds to do a two-phase hydraulic study of our water system, including the water treatment plant, um, storage capacities, flows throughout the system, uh, pipe performance and whatnot. Well, phase one of that study has been completed. So what we did in phase one was a lot of data collection. We, we provided information to DGR on our high-service pumps, our water tower, our system piping, including age, condition, size and location. From there, then we tested the efficiency of our high-service pumps, um, just to make sure that they were still performing close to what the curve was from, you know, the day that we ever bought. Make sure they were running efficiently. We then tested 42 locations in the system. We flow tested 42 locations in the system. Uh, each flow test involved three different fire hydrants. We would flow one and then record static and residual pressures on the other two, just to get an idea on what happens in every neighborhood when you turn the hydrant on. What pressure do we have when we start? What pressure do we have, um, while flowing 300, 500, 1,000 GPM, whatever the case may be. High-service pumps were left off during these tests. Um, that was done so that we could get worst-case scenario projections out there. So the only water we were feeding when we were flow testing was out of the elevated tank. And then we had a data recorder, uh, placed at the base of the tower so we could, can, um, record pressures at the tower and also see if we seen large, uh, spikes or drops in the tower when we opened up certain hydrants. From there, DGR took all the information that we had, they inputted into their hydraulic model, calibrated that model based on all the information that we had provided them. And then they provided us with a report and, uh, Keith and I had a long discussion with them about what the report said, what it meant, and what do we do from here? So what did we learn from the report? The report basically just pointed out the strengths and weaknesses in our system. There was no huge surprises in the report, uh, although there were some areas that didn't perform as well as Keith and I thought they would. On the flip side of that, there was other areas in the system that performed better than what we anticipated. But how does this help us? The big thing out of that calibrated model is now moving forward, if we want to improve an area, uh, we've, I've got maps and diagrams in this book showing the good and the, and the not as good areas down. If I've got low flow in an area and I want to improve it, instead of Keith and I looking at a map and saying, well, geez, it makes sense maybe to run an eight-inch pipe from here to here and that should improve the flow in there. Now with this calibrated model, we call DGR and we say, hey, plug an eight-inch pipe in there. What's it do? Let's try a six-inch in the same line. What does that do? It'll help us get a better cost benefit and get us accurate information on what that does to our system and what it will do to tower levels and everything combined. So the, the, the hope is, or the thought is, is that'll give us, um, that'll help us make us better decisions, more financially responsible decisions when we start looking at looping lines, adding lines and whatnot throughout the community. What's next? DGR is currently working on phase two of the water study. Phase two of the study focuses more on water use projections, water storage requirements from the DNR, um, if we need more storage, um, what kind of storage is best for us, whether it's an elevated tank or a GSR or something along that lines. We're going to have them look in more in-depth to water age. Disinfection pride, disinfection byproducts are becoming a larger deal. Uh, we do quite a bit of testing for TPHMs and HA5s. One of the big factors to that is water age. They can help us identify where some of our worst areas in there. Maybe do some more flushing in those areas to keep better water quality within the system. And so they're going to look at all those options. Um, any option that appears to make any kind of sense for us, they'll give us a preliminary cost option on that and then also make some recommendations on what they think is best for Sheldon water system going forward. Phase two is scheduled to be done sometime in October. So maybe I would then, I'm really hoping for that, uh, simply because then that gives us some time to maybe make some plans with the upcoming budget here.
Awesome.
So there's a quick and dirty, very, very small piece of what actually happened. But you guys have any questions?
How is the waters, I mean, with the second deep well now and stuff, I mean, adding, are we keeping up for the most part?
Yeah, we're keeping up, but we're still running a, a fairly high percentage of deep well water. Um, shallow wells have, have seen some recovery with rains. We're above, above production and levels of what we had in 2012 when we were in the heart of the drought, but we're still not back to the point of what we were prior to 2012. So we're still pumping a much larger percentage of deep well water than used to, but yes, we're keeping up. I'd like to see the percentage lower.
How we're able to get enough water right now, it's just the, the quality of that water is, what our grains of hardness were back before 2012 to where they're at today are substantially different.
Part of 2012, we were around, around 25 grains. Today we're almost 50. Hardness is definitely, simply because the deep well water is 80 to 90 grains hard and the shallow well water is 25 grains hard.
In, in light of these studies and their projections and all that, and Lewis and Clark is out there, who knows how long? I mean, in terms of that supply, does that really enter into the equation much or is it just more how that supply is dispersed?
This study is not looking at supply. This study is looking at our existing system, uh, is looking at fire flows of the existing system, is looking at, um-
Really more the distribution?
Really more the distribution.
Storage, storage capabilities, capacity.
Whether it comes from Lewis and Clark, it's, it goes through the same piping and-
Correct.
Right. Transfers through this, yeah.
A lot has to do with some of our development out east and the demand for, for water in different locations and, and how that ties in with our distribution system. So I think some of that development has created some certainly higher demands.
It has, and, and I, DGR is going to look into this closer, but I'm fairly positive we're on the low end, not under what the DNR is going to recommend for elevated storage or, we've always gotten by because we have a 1 million gallon reservoir at the water plant with pumps and backup generation. We might still be okay, but that's one thing I wanted to certainly look at. You got to make sure you have water ready for the community when they need it, not only for daily consumption, but for emergency-type scenarios.
Could you tell the, some of the looping that we've done throughout town? Did that improve the water distribution?
Uh, there's, there's areas of the looping we've done that performed much better than I thought. And, you know, those were always our-
Weak spots.
Lack of better terms. Keith and I sat down and went, well, we think this will really help this area. Um, so yeah, that has helped. Absolutely. But now the question becomes, if we put a eight-inch pipe, could we have done the same with a six? This program will tell us that. So moving forward, we won't oversize, but in the same respect, we will undersize.
Nice.
Good.
Thanks, Todd. Number seven on our agenda, way back ago in 1999, it was decided to switch the mayor's term from a two-year to a four-year and there's documentation, but it was never done by ordinance. So we're going to consider the first reading of ordinance regarding the mayor's term in office as a four-year term. And as Scott had in our emails, it's more of a housekeeping. So we have to go through our three readings or we can suspend and just pass it today.
I would, will we suspend it and just pass it since that's what we've been doing all along anyway?
16 years now?
That's practice. I'll support.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, jokes?
That was done by a council vote back then or it changed or was it?
It was done by, it started with a resolution, which was then passed on to the electorate and passed.
So that was done by election?
At a citywide election.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad. Any, any other questions? No? Roll call please. Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Now we need to approve it since we're, since we are waving, thank you for that reminder. Since we're waving the second and third reading, we'll need to take action to approve the ordinance now.
I'll make the motion to approve that ordinance.
Support.
Thank you. Now roll call please. Rensing?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
And number eight, discussion on our grant application options for the Sheldon Crossing development. As we know, some grants have deadlines, so Scott, you want to fill us in on what you found?
Yeah, this was recently brought up when we were kind of having our discussion regards to the proposed event center and questions for, for Mike Bell. I've since then been doing some research of possible funding options, grant options, uh, not only regards to the event center, but other options as it relates to the, you know, entire Sheldon Crossing Park development, et cetera. Uh, one of the, the big applications that, uh, I, I think we need to consider is, is Through Vision Iowa, the Community Attraction Tourism Grant. I've had conversations since our last meeting with Mike Bell and then also an in-depth conversation with, uh, Steve Hallgren, who is with Northwest Iowa Planning and Development Corporation. Uh, he basically is kind of our, our grant writer for this area and we're a member of that organization. Uh, he's written a number of grants through, uh, through the community attraction tourism. He actually helped us get our grant for our outdoor aquatic center. Uh, there's a new round of funding that's just been made available, uh, $5 million through the community attraction tourism funding and then $2 million of carryover funds, uh, that were either from projects that hadn't been completed or didn't meet the expectation that they anticipated. Uh, so they're considering another round of funding, uh, with an application deadline of October 15. Uh, so what I guess I'm, I'm asking from the council is, is seeking direction and it's not that you have to officially approve the application that we're moving forward with per se, let's say, the event center. We feel it's advantageous. It, it's quite a, a healthy application process. Um, it's probably going to take us a good month to put this all together, uh, but there's some significant funding available of going after this grant application. Um, those funds could go relatively quick. Uh, based on some past projects, we've seen, uh, facilities such as event centers be funded anywhere from 15 to 20%. A recent example is one that, uh, was recently built in Emmitsburg. Uh, they had a $2.8 million project and they received $400,000 in, in CAT funding. Uh, so these type projects and similar projects to what we have out there, uh, certainly are projects that they're very interested in, in considering. Um, I also talked to Steve. I, I think I brought up before the, the possibility of, of bundling more projects into this. Um, he doesn't necessarily see that as advantageous. Uh, he says, I think we certainly go in, we tell our story about the whole park development, uh, the Sheldon Crossing development, uh, the plans all the way back from, you know, 2004 when we, when we purchased that ground, started talking about our development, uh, but feels, you know, if the event center is the one focal point we're looking for now, uh, to consider a funding application for that, but certainly make them aware, hey, we're probably going to come back to the trough again next year and do a funding application for the, the Rattrel segment, uh, the borrow pit development, uh, piers, fishing, you know, docks, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they like to see kind of those phased projects, but not necessarily that you put it all in one funding application. So with that said, and certainly receptive to any questions you might have, uh, looking to see if the council would be receptive if I start working with Northwest Iowa Planning Development and Mike Bell, uh, to submit an application for possible funding for, um, our event center.
I would say look into it.
What kind of fees are there?
We don't know until we try.
I think the maximum, I mean, we're probably talking a maximum of $1,000 of, of fees Northwest Iowa Planning and Development. And basically that's for, for copying costs. Uh, the application's probably about, you know, four to six inches thick and we got to provide them, uh, I think 12 copies, um, all at our cost. So basically that covers all of our copying expenses and we have to deliver them in person to Des Moines, so.
Oh, my.
We go there enough anyways, that will-
I say go after it, get whatever, apply for whatever we can, get what we can get.
Time-wise, why, I know, not sure where we're going to go on the event center yet. Hopefully before we actually even submit it, before the October 15 deadline, hopefully we'll have some more information back on our proposed operational study. Hopefully by that time, we'll have a better idea of whether we're proceeding, moving into final design, kind of some direction stuff around that as well. So if, let's say come that first council meeting in October, we're not comfortable yet, before we actually send it, submit it, we can kind of put it on the shelf and hold on to it, you know, if need be, so.
Okay. That'd be October 7th, so it's still plenty of days before, so. All right, absolutely. I say go for it. Any questions or comments then? All right, thank you, Scott. Last is, uh, comments, any comments anywhere? Council?
I got a comment.
Yep.
To clear up a situation, I never once said to disband the marketing committee. Just want to make that clear.
Okay. Okay.
Kudos to our local Holiday Inn staff, bringing us some pretty neat notoriety and...
Yeah, with the tiger?
Yeah, with the little tiger.
It was kind of cute, if you haven't seen that story.
Congratulations to them, good job, well done.
Any comments down yonder to my right? I just have a heads up, school's going to start next week. I, we always want people to slow down and watch for the children, but please obey traffic signs. Lyle, I'm going to talk to you about 11th Street and 9th Avenue. Okay? I'm just making that very aware so everybody knows that that is a stop sign there. And just be aware, kids are going to start...
Are you referring to Lyle never stops for it or what do you say?
Lyle, we're going to talk, all right? All right? No, I just...
You're rolling through it all again?
Oh, no. But if people, just be aware, kids are going to be out and about starting on Wednesday. I know the public schools, I'm not sure about Christian or the Catholic schools, but just heads up, slow down, keep it safe. I appreciate it. And on that note, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Rensing?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.